Even the assembly process is making everyone closer.
It's a joy.
Volunteer Fletcher Wiley has been fixing bicycles since he was a kid.
So this is an extension of your childhood, giving back to the children of today.
Yes, it is, and I get to build a bike again.
And it's fun, right?
It is, it is, it is. Especially when you know what the end results are. To see the smile in the kids' face as they get the bikes, that's what you want to see.
We'll show you how the kids react on the upcoming holiday edition of L.A. this week. From the district offices of Council President Herb Wesson, I'm Gil Reyes.
The kids will also be receiving free helmets and bike locks. The LAPD, Neighborhood Councils, the L.A. Bicycle Coalition, and the L.A. Chargers also came out to help. Now tune in next week when we'll show you what happened during the giveaway. While this next family's been through a lot, the dad was nearly deported just as his teenage daughters were getting ready for the L.A. Marathon. As Gil Reyes reports, a generous donation is going to a group that inspired the family to pull through.
This arrest saddened and frightened L.A.'s immigrant community. Undocumented worker Romulo Avellaco Gonzalez arrested by federal agents in February after dropping off his daughter at school in Lincoln Heights. Another daughter, the one you heard crying in the video, recorded the episode on her cellphone.
I was moved by that incident. We began to collaborate with the school and to do all that we could from the council office to make sure that Mr. Romulo was released.
Councilman Gil Sadio stood with Avellaco Gonzalez, who's returned to his community after spending six months in federal custody. For now, the courts have granted a reprieve from deportation. Councilman Sadio also presented a $2,500 check to a group close to Avellaco Gonzalez. It's called Students Run L.A. They help kids like his daughters complete the L.A. Marathon and also mentor them socially and academically.
Why this organization? Well, the girls were actually training for the L.A. Marathon before their dad was arrested earlier this year. The dad had led them through several hours of grueling training sessions but ended up missing the Marathon altogether because of his arrest.
The dad says his grieving girls had wanted to drop out of the race, but he encouraged them to go on without him. Daughter Fatima finished the Marathon at 6:48. It was her first. Students Run L.A. says nearly every one of their mentored kids finish despite obstacles at home or school.
And the same is our graduation rate for our seniors. And more than 95% of our seniors each year have plans for post-secondary education.
Sports plays such a fundamental role in my development personally. Setting goals, teamwork, you know, working with others.
And facing life's challenges with bravery. In Lincoln Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The donation helped fund training, uniforms, bus transportation, and entry fees for the Marathon runners. While often people living in L.A.'s urban core and their kids have few options for healthy food and healthy living, but the city's La Plaza de Cultura, a group that promotes Hispanic culture, has a solution in the form of a truck. Anna Marcos joins us from the GRAT's Primary Center with a Healthy Scoop. Anna.
Yana, this mobile classroom called La Troca has an important lesson for the kids today: how to make, eat, and grow your own healthy food.
There it goes, there it goes. So I want you to keep mine.
Nothing like cranking out a little spaghetti squash to start the day on a healthy note. The kids at the Para los Niños GRAT's Primary Center are getting tips on healthy eating and meal preparation.
Take two tomatoes. Here you go, Katie. Two tomatoes?
Yep.
This is the work of La Plaza de Cultura y Artes and its mobile truck classroom, La Troca, which goes around schools teaching kids about their Mexican cultural roots while weaving in healthy eats and even a little English-Spanish native foods vocabulary.
Avocados, avocados. Squash, calabaza. Because there's food deserts out there in the community where they don't have the opportunity to buy fresh fruit, buy fresh vegetables.
It's so funny to see them like, "I don't want to eat vegetables. That's what we're doing today. I'm not into that at all." And then watch their faces like putting these giant noodles into their face. They're so excited.
How is it?
Because, of course, there's the eating part. There's gardening lessons, too, and theater games? Yep. The kids get to impersonate a plant growing. Then they get their hands dirty as they mix soil and plant their own seed in a little dirt cup. Seeds like...
Squash!
You want to grow squash? Where are you going to grow it?
Mmm.
Do you have a garden?
Hmm.
Or a window? What do you have?
I have a window.
You really going to grow it? Yeah?
Because I have a little squash in here, and it's growing. Grow, grow, grow.
The kids do sound pretty excited about it. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The La Troca mobile education classroom is cosponsored with Para los Niños and the PepsiCo Foundation. Well, L.A. may have welcomed the Olympics to town twice before in 1984 and 1932, but this time it's getting a double whammy. Anna Marcos shows us how the Paralympics are also in the running.
L.A. will have more than a decade to prepare for its Olympic dream, and it's not just the 2028 Olympic Games it's hosting.
While L.A. has hosted two Olympic Games, we have never had the honor of hosting the Paralympic Games.
You can bet that I'll be there in the front row with my daughter cheering them on.
Yep, L.A. will be hosting two Olympics in 2028: the regular Olympics and the Paralympics, which cater to athletes with impaired muscular and movement ability or missing limbs. The Paralympic Games have grown in size and popularity over the years and usually run right after the Olympics. The UCLA campus will be among the hosts.
We're going to be the Olympic Village. We're going to be a training venue for many of the athletes, and we will support some of the competitions here.
This campus is a welcoming environment for all people, including some of the finest disabled athletes in the world. UCLA is fully ADA-complying campus.
And L.A. city leaders plan to elevate the Paralympics into something never seen before.
All of us live life full of impediments, but the sport world teaches us that it is when we dig deep inside our souls and our spirits that we can accomplish anything, that we can be equals on the playing field, that it isn't always about whether we win or lose, it's how we compete.
It's a huge opportunity for us to have 10 years, 10 years and a half, to work with you guys and think out of the box. Come with new approaches.
We get a feeling we're in for a true Olympian experience and that the Games themselves will take home the gold. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The first official Paralympic Games kicked off in Rome in 1960. Well, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce has teamed up with Hollywood's biggest producers and movie moguls for the annual State of the Entertainment Industry event, as Anna Marcos shows us there's a lot to cheer about.
Welcome to Hollywood. You have arrived.
Yes, you see the movie marquees, the celebrity tour buses with their gawking tourists, the stars on the Walk of Fame, and there's no doubt you're in Tinseltown. And this movie capital of the world plans to stay that way, even after a few hard years due to runaway production. California's A.B. 1839, a law passed in 2015 that provides production tax credits, has led more TV and movie productions to come running back. That's one of the big stories at the yearly State of the Entertainment Industry Conference in Hollywood.
The stages are running at capacity, and there's talk of constructing new stages, which is huge for our economy. Jobs, jobs, jobs. I always say it's all about jobs.
And in 2017, there was a 27% increase in locally honored television shows because so many good shows came back.
California Senate Leader Kevin DeLeón was a lead negotiator for the law.
We made it very clear that no one, and I mean no one, is going to outcompete the great state of California. And there's no place on earth that can replace Hollywood as a world's entertainment capital. Hollywood is here to stay.
But the movie industry is going through other changes as well.
Wonder Woman taught us that, no surprise, a woman can carry a superhero movie. It also taught us that, no surprise, a woman can direct a superhero movie.
One big change that's brought about a whole new economy is streaming content or entertainment on demand, as more and more audiences want to pay for what they want to watch, when they want to watch it, and how they want to watch it, often on their mobile device.
This, of course, is very big right now, of course, with the rise of the Netflix and Hulu's in the world that are challenging traditional, historic ways that viewers have viewed content.
One panel discussion noted the growing options for tailoring specific shows to specific viewers.
Something that you may want to watch at 6:00 a.m. might be related to exercise, and you might want something shown differently to you in terms of the set of choices at 6:00 a.m. than you might want at 7:00 p.m. on a Thursday evening.
It's an optimistic message one organizers want to share with the public, that a thriving entertainment industry helps not just film and TV productions, but all of us Angelenos and Californians as well. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The executive producer of Modern Family, Steve Levitin, received a Commitment to California Award at the event for his efforts to keep his productions in California. A section of South L.A., once devoid of holiday decor, is now making festive lights a Christmas tradition, as Gil Reyes shows us the bright lights on Broadway return for a second season.
Holiday lights are back to brighten up several blocks of Broadway Boulevard in South Los Angeles, and this is the centerpiece.
This Christmas tree is, just brings so much unity within our neighborhood. When you drive down Broadway and see the spirit of Christmas, it encourages you if you bring joy to your heart.
The nearly 40-foot tree now illuminates South L.A.'s Century Palms neighborhood, an area represented by Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson.
The community inspired it. We have these great islands in the middle of Broadway Avenue. They just beg for holiday lights. So today we have a tree and lights for blocks and blocks north and south of here.
11-year-old Derek Davis hopes the displays inspire peace.
Maybe it could get somebody to meet other people, see if they like watching the tree, and then people come over here and they start talking, and then they become friends.
And we invite the entire city of Los Angeles to come celebrate this tree with us here on Broadway and Century.
In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
At night, the holiday lights set Broadway aglow from 93rd to 111th Street. A city council takes steps to improve how it handles sexual harassment complaints. Have an emergency? Now you can text a message to 911. And another smart streetlight installation helps L.A. become the city of the future. All these stories in City Beat. Looking to develop a more centralized process to handle sexual harassment complaints by municipal employees, the L.A. City Council voted to explore the creation of a compliant hotline and website while also reexamining current policies. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, who introduced the motion along with Councilman Paul Krikorian, said that for too long, women have had to deal with issues of an unpleasant comment, a look, a gesture, or something that has made them feel uncomfortable. After hearing members of the Personnel Department testify that harassment complaints can sometimes be handled within a department or by managers, and that the city does not fully track all complaints, Krikorian said he hoped the motion would lead to a more centralized process. As of December 1st, mobile users in the city of L.A. now have the ability to send text messages to 911, giving hearing and speech impaired residents or those in situations where it is too dangerous to dial 911 a potentially lifesaving option. With L.A. going live, nearly all mobile users throughout L.A. County will be covered by the technology. "Call if you can, text if you can't" is the slogan developed by the Federal Communications Commission as the new technology makes its debut. The city of L.A. and the LAPD will play an integral role in this new technology that has the potential to impact millions of Angelenos. Crews from the Los Angeles Department of Public Works Bureau of Street Lighting installed the second smart node in the city across from City Hall. The program involves the installation of streetlight poles that also include compartments for small cell communication equipment and antennas, cameras, electric vehicle charging, USB charging ports, power outlets, and speakers. Officials say the technology makes streets safer while improving the wireless network for smartphones in urban areas. They also say the smart node has the potential to do so much more.
We envision in the future we will have sensors attached in some of those compartments where you can have CO2 sensors, you can have temperature sensors, traffic count sensors, earthquake detection, maybe gunshot detection sensors. So sensors is the future.
A popular holiday story comes alive on stage. Go winter tubing during Snow Day L.A. and enjoy some of the most dazzling holiday displays right from your car. All this and this week's things to do. If Christmas is near, it's time for Too Many Tamaleys, based on a story by Gary Soto. It's a tender holiday story about children's mischief, traditions, and family love during a holiday gathering. Too Many Tamaleys tells the story of Maria, who is certain she's lost her mother's wedding ring after secretly trying it on while helping her prepare the dough for the tamaleys. Her only solution to the problem is to convince her cousin they must eat all the tamaleys in a desperate attempt to find the lost jewel in the dough. Puppets dance songs and tons of tamaleys burst through the walls of the theater whenever Too Many Tamaleys hits the stage, December 15th through the 18th, at La Plaza de la Raza. For more, visit bfatheater.org. Enjoy some winter tubing during Snow Day L.A. Hop on a tube and fly through twinkling light archways decorated trees and falling snow. Enjoy food trucks, drinks, giant singing snowmen, and tubing lanes of varying lengths and thrill levels to satisfy every age group. So go ahead and take a ride on Saturday, December 16th, at the Old Lodge at 2002 Stadium Way. For more, visit snowdayla.com. Head on over to Candy Can Lane in Woodland Hills to watch dazzling holiday decorations twinkle and light up the night sky. Every year, families descend upon the enchanted Village of Lights to enjoy the magical displays on the four streets bordered by Oxnard, Martha, Corbin, and Winnetka. The lights can generally be enjoyed through New Year's Eve. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacitybeat.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning. I'd like to ask everyone to please take their seats. Today is Tuesday, December 12th. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Harris Dawson moves, and Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves, and Ofero seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Buscaino, would you lead us in our flag salute?
With great honor.
If all would please rise, all please rise.
Kindly face the flag, pride hand over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Madam Clerk, if you would please continue.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 8 are items noted for a public hearing. Please note that for Items 2 through 6, the ordinances will be presented on January 10th, 2018, instead of January 9th.
Thank you. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then let's continue.
Items 9 through 36 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for Items 20 and 26 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration, and there are requests to hold Items 26 and 36.
Okay, Mr. Ofero.
Item 15 special, please.
15. Mr. Buscaino.
I'd like to hold item number 16.
16.
And maybe if you don't mind, Mr. President, taking 16 and 36 together, port-related.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonin, did you?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Rue.
If we could hold 31.
Okay, let's hold 31. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Madam Clerk, please continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances will be held over unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 37 through 69 are items for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards on these items?
There are cards on all items except for Item 69.
Okay, let's vote on that then. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Bonin.
Item 69 forthwith, please.
Okay. Without objection, so ordered. Mr. Rue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I wanted to do 48 special.
Too late. Okay, so we have to reconsider that? Okay, so we have to reconsider that? Oh, it's already held. Mr. Bonin.
Yes, Mr. President.
Got you, Mr. Rue.
Mr. Harris Dawson, I would like to reconsider item 33 for a technical amendment.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration on item 33. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, we'll just leave it there until you guys work that out. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes us to items 70 through 72, which are items scheduled for closed session.
Let's hold those until I get a chance to chat with the chair. That brings us where?
And that takes council back to general public comment, or items called special.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we call up Mr. Murphy? Sean, if we could pull Mr. Murphy's items.
What item? I don't have agenda.
If we could pull his items up. Hold on, Sean.
Yeah, sure, Herb.
Okay, why don't you go 1A and 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and general public comment.
Item A is a good item. Item B is a good item. Item number five, I am against this item, and I'll tell you why. We're spending too much money. General public comment.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, sure. The sidewalks need to be repaired. The streets need to be- There are a lot of potholes on Lower Canyon Boulevard near where I live at. There's a lot of potholes that need to be done. I ride my bike on it, so that's about it. I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you. Could you pull up Mr. Previn on my screen? Okay, Mr. Previn, I have you for 1A and B, 47, 56, 60, 65, 73, and general public comment.
Thank you, sir.
Also, I've been informed you can speak on items 71 and 72.
Thank you, but you haven't announced the settlements. And 73, I believe, is a special meeting item, so I can't speak on that until we go into the special meeting. But I will move forward as best I can. The Expo Construction Authority is putting Bruins, is replacing Backstrom, and Molnar, which is Mr. Bonin's chief of staff, will be the alternate, so we appreciate that. Item 47 is the CAO as a project coordinator exemption request. The mayor's requesting, once again.
Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn.
I'm sorry.
Listen. Keep going, but-
Don't ruin my time. I'll talk. Okay, number 60 is on the agenda. This is a gift from AEG. They are putting in $10,000 to the El Grito Festival, which we do appreciate. 71 is a lawsuit, the Youth Justice Coalition, obviously the gang injunction is no longer zeitgeisty. There was a big article in the newspaper. It's actually oppressive to certain people, unfortunately. We have to find a different way to control gangs. Item number 65, sir, I have to give high kudos to you on finding a way to extend the vacation for the council, the recess schedule, expertly I might add, by invoking EID, which is the last bit of Ramadan, but you're doing it the day after the last bit of Ramadan, so it's really nicely done. And then you've got the same kind of thing, which looks like it's related to the Orthodox Christmas for a day, and this is a great opportunity for people to be able to get away and extend to one of the longest recess schedules of any council in America. So mazel tov, and well done. Item number 33, sir, and all the 30s, if I may.
Mr. President, 33 has already been voted on.
All right, we got you. We got you. You're doing a good job. When I hear about public benefit, I'm always attracted to that, and I am so proud of CD 14 for garnering what looks like almost-
What item are you on, Mr.?
On the public benefit item.
Mr. Previn.
I don't have the number, sir. There's 75 items.
Mr. Previn.
Yeah.
Mr. Previn.
You can't talk about public benefit? Fair enough.
You should, Mr. Previn, you should know what items that you signed up for.
Well, you have 70-
And if you, no, no, Mr. Previn, if there are too many items for you to remember, then maybe you should not put so many items on there. So either you're going to stick to the item, or we're going to go to your general public comment. Choice is yours.
Well, I appreciate you can have that time that you took from me, but it's really rude and inappropriate.
Mr., okay, go to his general, one minute for general public comment.
Sure, sure, that's fine. I mean, I don't understand. I'll just make it real quick. 700 units for the Lux Hotel in Weezer's district results in almost a $3 million public benefit. Englander did 660 units of market rate in his district, and it was a $200,000 benefit. So the public benefit meter is not working in all the districts, right? So that's the problem. And that's a billionaire who's making that project. Now, I love billionaires, just like everybody else, and I just want to make this point about the county board of supervisors. We wrote in City Watch, and it's up there now. You could look at it, sir. It's a heartbreaker. We're increasing from 12 to $15 the cost to enter the Museum of Natural History. Now, how is entering the Museum of Natural History, the public county's artifacts, any different than entering a public library? And yet, we're jacking that price up. So I'd ask this body, Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, Mr. Price, all the people who have people- Let's write a letter to the county board of supervisors requesting that they back off that egregious upcharge to the poorest of the- There are 700,000 people who can't even get the EBT, the food stamps that they want, because they're afraid because of-
Thank you. Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have items 1A and B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, A, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61 and 2, 65, 66, and general public comment.
So I can't speak on item 72 yet, sir?
No, you cannot. That's in the special agenda.
So as you heard regarding item of the reward-
No.
Relative offer of reward by Jose Weezer for identification of sexual harassment, apprehension, and conviction of persons responsible for sexual misconduct death of Mr. Solano, which occurred November 7th, 2017. And then I go into the next item regarding relative selection of developers for affordable housing projects similar to the one on the case, item 72, properties of various actions related to disposition of development of the city's own property, unconstitutional. And then I go into item number 48. A real good one. Relative proposal for children's savings account.
Hold on one second, Mr.- Hold his time. Hold his time. Mr. Herman, hold on one second.
And, Mr. Herman, I misspoke. I thought you said 73. If you want to speak on item 72, feel free.
Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
So now that I was rudely interrupted as I brought out on item fucking 72 for the fucking conditions of Fair Housing Act under the American Disability Act, in which I continually to describe ADA Title II, Title III, Mr. Sadio, discrimination based on a biased prejudice city of Los Angeles for negotiations regarding voluntary compliance. Fuck you. ADA 2010 standards are the only requirement of compliance, and this city needs to hire an ADA compliance officer to deal with all the shenanigans of stealing from the public.
Yes.
So you see, as long as we have regulatory Department of Housing of Urban Development, and you can't provide Section 8 for the homeless, for our veterans, and people discriminated, like me, the trooper, then you find out that this city is really, really fucked up, Mr. Keebler. Sit down. So when dealing with the Department of Real Abilityation Act of 1973, it should include Section 504 and include the Baines Act to stop the predatory attack on housing against the homeless. Fuck you.
Let's give him his one minute.
Now that we have a topic of conversation, LAUSD wants you to pay for their children to have a bank account. Well, we're not in the business of banking for children. We're in the business of higher education. We're in a deficit, a ceiling deficit, because Herman Jason Wesson is going to be sued as an individual by Wayne Spindler, along with you, Mr. City Attorney, for all the illegal Brown Act violations of unconstitutional disrespect to motherfuckers who come here to protest on all items of this fucked up agenda. And why do I say it that way? Because you interrupt me. All I want is respect, niggers, and instead, I have to wear a hoodie and come here as the trooper saying to you, "42 USC."
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Okay, Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I understand the rights of individuals to express their First Amendment, but when a person is shouting, yelling, and particularly when they're yelling obscenities, it is disrupting our meeting. We cannot conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion for us to conduct our business. We have certain decorum in here. Understandably, they need to express themselves how they would like to, but there's certain decorum that we can't control of individuals, and when somebody's shouting at the top of their lungs, we would ask them to keep their- do it in an appropriate manner so that we could conduct our business here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. So McAllister, Patricia McAllister, 1A, 48, 55, 58, 62, 67, and general public comment.
Good morning, Mr. President. I see here on the agenda, item number 62, where you're going to have a ceremony here in the city chamber, because you're getting an award. I think we need to take that outside. The Intercontinental is brand new on 7th and Fig. Let's take it there. This room is sacred. This is where lives are destroyed, and some lives are made. So we don't need all that up in here. Item number one, people are being charged 250% interest, penalties for violations on their homes. They're being thrown into the street. That's too much money. One guy just had a sign advertising his computer business in front of his house. He was charged $980. Item number 67, Mr. Price, current Price, District 9, building, won 13 million to build some housing. All of this just came up this month. What you guys been doing for the other 11 months? Now, I want to make sure black people are in these houses, not these legal aliens. Okay, we got about 15 million illegals in Los Angeles. Now, about this Skid Row, I see here that you guys want to put the Italians, give the Italians a business district on Skid Row. I grew up in Chicago. We had, the Jews were in there. They were the doctors, writing all of those opiates prescriptions, and the Italians were across the street selling the drugs. So now you want to put the Italians down in Skid Row to keep drugging my people? You're a liar. I want my people off Skid Row. If anybody belongs on Skid Row, it's these 15 million illegal aliens. They're in affordable housing. Number 55. This was just received in April. So you guys have been doing a lot of work, and you haven't built any housing. Now, I want to make sure that, as I said in District 1, any housing that goes up in District 1, that's Sadio, that's for illegal aliens. If illegal aliens live in District 1, and you're building housing in District 1, who do you think is going to be living there? Illegal aliens. And I wish these people over here shut their mouths so that I can hear. I can't hear myself speak. And that's your job, to keep them orderly over there, Mr. President. Now, about these kids in this banking system. I had it out. Everybody should have this sheet. This is from LAUSD, the population of the students. 70% are Latino, 10% are Asian. 80% of the students in the Los Angeles Unified School District are students of illegal aliens. You cannot do that, build a district. I'm a former teacher, and I'm a teacher for life. And these children can't read and write in Spanish. How the heck do you expect us to teach them English? We're going to have to get our black people, white people, back in these cities, and especially Los Angeles. Hopefully, President Trump will run them out of here. 80%, this banking thing. I went and researched this company. This company just changed its name recently that wants to start a bank. It's nothing but a scam. 40% of that money they put in there would be used for fees. So we don't need any banking scam, especially for children and their parents being railroaded out of their money. Talking about they want to save up $500 for graduation. Give me a break.
Let's give her one minute.
Public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have been here for a while, but people have been seeing me everywhere, asking me, "Why haven't I been to City Hall?" And I thought I was working here. I may have to bill you guys, but anyway, I'm back. But I have been following you. My biggest concern is black people being homeless. Now, we got three council members who are black. They look black to me. Harris Dawson, Price, and Mr. President. You guys are being held responsible. Now, you may think you're not. The karma is coming on you for you not doing for your people. If I was sitting on this council every day, I would be fighting to get my people off Skid Row. We got children and women, not just men, on Skid Row. And the three of you sit here like white folks love you. They don't love you. They're waiting for you to fall, so they can kick you. If you don't have our support, black people's support, you have nothing. And I'm pleading to you to do more for your people. Okay? You got to help black people, and this karma is coming off on your grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and your children.
Thank you. Okay, City Attorney, Mr. Herman, stop. City Attorney, that concludes the multiple public comment section. So if anyone comes in now, it is too late to participate in that process. Mr. Sadio, I think, item 48, is it?
Yes, it's moved to adopt the CAO report on item 48.
Okay, on that item, let's open the roll.
And a second.
I'll do that. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
It's my understanding that we can vote now on items 1 through 8. So if you could pull up 1 through 8. On those items, please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, we're going to do a vote on reconsideration for items 10 and 34. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Buscaino, 16 and 36, you ready for those?
We have an amended motion going around. You want to buy it?
Believe, give us a few minutes, Mr. President. Are you guys amending? I understand Mr. Corretts has an amending motion, so we'd like to see that. So we're not ready.
Okay, so we'll move on.
Mr. President, would you like to reconsider the orders on items 9 and 11?
Let's do that. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on them. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
I want to switch back temporarily to just general public comment. Matt Johansson, Richard Robinson, Joel Lee, David Cole. Richard, come on. Matt Johansson.
Honorable President, Members, Richard Robinson. Improve, don't move. Sir, when former City Councilman Lindsey was rebuilding the building- Sir, when former City Councilman Lindsay was rebuilding the Billno Hotel in District 9 downtown, downtown became a sanctuary as he and Tom Bradley focused much-needed spiritual leadership on the needs of African-American blacks. Gentrification is again rearing its ugly head as snakes sneak into government ignoring the needs of homeless and other poor people shoved into an overcrowded and underserved downtown Skid Row. At Manon Fifth, that hotel complex, the former million-dollar hotel, would be an ideal place in the future, built to serve an underserved homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next public speaker. Mats. Joe Lee, David Ko. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
My name is Mats Johansson. I live in Baldwin Hills since 10 years ago. My wife's family has been there for 50 years. I'm speaking on the subject of the liquor bank and their license. The liquor bank has regularly broken their rules of engagement. They are selling the kind of miniature liquor bottles that almost always ends up in our gutters and on our sidewalks. Due to those two reasons, I support revoking their license.
Okay, so do we have Joe Lee? David Ko? If I called you, please come up.
I request that I may speak with my colleague, for we are speaking on the same topic.
Wait, your name is what?
Oh, sorry. Joe Lee.
So this is your one minute, so go ahead.
All right. Good evening, happy holidays, Council President and Council Members. I am here with my colleague on behalf of Global Initiatives Alliance. Before we begin, we would like to especially thank Council Members Harris Dawson for your support in our literary campaign last year, and Councilman Sadio for your support in our I-Migrant Heritage Festival with Turla this past June. The Global Initiatives Alliance is a social advocacy group made up of high school students from different cities around Southern California who felt that it was about time that young youth went for change in our current social environments. This holiday, we are focusing on environmental and animal rights, more specifically orangutan and the effect of palm oil it has on the environment and the forestation. As we enter the holidays, it's so easy to get caught up in the festivities and general gift-giving vibes that we often forget about the many other people that are being disenfranchised by these actions.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Ko, and in continuation, rather than embarking on a grand expedition to completely stop the worldwide use of palm oil and not follow through, we have chosen to carry out more local methods of assistance that can provide small but significant impacts in our fight for orangutans. We learned that one of the most commonly-used household items, soap, is a central product utilizing palm oil. Thus, we found various methods of creating palm-oil-free soap that is equally effective, and have worked together to create palm-oil-free holiday soap, as per the samples, for the community to show how accessible and realistic the process can be. More importantly, we are currently raising funds through our event donations and our GoFundMe page, Unchain the Orangutan, to support the Orangutan Foundation International in preventing further damage through ethical accumulation of land to limit deforestation and to conserve the natural habitats. Thus, we ask the leaders and community's support to provide relief and restoration to the environment and endangered species.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, why don't we vote on items 37 through 47? Please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, now, let's go to items 49 through 67. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right. Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready on 15?
I am.
And, Mr. President, an amending motion has been posted and circulated for consideration.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, in July of 2013, one of my first actions on the City Council was to unlock the arts development fee that had been held in purgatory for about 10 years, based on a legal opinion. I co-introduced this motion with Jose Weezer, and it has long been a goal of mine to make sure that across the city, we can have a greater expression of the arts and cultural representation in all neighborhoods. When we did that amending motion through a series of working group meetings, we landed on a lot of components that made this new arts development fee expenditure plan more equitable across the city. The working group developed nexus findings so that we could spend money from the arts development fees collected beyond a one-block radius where the project was to be built. This has resulted in millions and millions of dollars since 2014, when this council adopted this new expenditure plan and updated the ordinance that was the arts development fee, which was originally created back in the late 1980s. So what we have before us today is the annual expenditure plan, and there is a deadline that is looming so that we spend down these monies. I won't go into painstaking detail about why and what that is. We did that in committee a month ago, but I know that the Department of Cultural Affairs has met with each council office to talk about projects that are important, of mutual importance. So this is really a result of a success of this council, that we can now have culture and art that is worthy of our residents across the city of Los Angeles. And colleagues, this is just the beginning of what we're going to see in terms of live performances and music and sculptures. This is a biennial that we're approving, one project in every single council district. So I do ask for your aye vote, and the amending motion introduced by our colleague, Mr. Blumenfeld, will come to my committee to be dealt with in January. So I ask for your aye vote, and this is a wonderful, wonderful, I think, celebration for us to rally around and for the arts in Los Angeles. And if there are any questions, we do have Tanya Picasso and Daniel Torica from the Department of Cultural Affairs, if anyone has any questions to ask them.
There are no speakers on the cue, so, Mr. O'Farrell, with your permission, why don't we move forward and vote?
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. No, and this is wonderful, and I fully support what you're doing. The one amendment, just to explain what it is, in the biannual project, the citywide, you took a line item from each council district, but there was, I think it was an inadvertent mistake, the line item that is expiring most recently is not the one that was taken, as is the custom. So I want to make sure that we're taking the one that's going to expire most recently and not the one that's expiring in 2019. And that's the reason for the amendment, and I've been assured from the chair that we will deal with that and fix that in January, or now, whenever you want. But, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Ru.
If we could reconsider 48.
Item 48, reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item before us today is something that is near and dear to my heart and very exciting. Many of you have met my family. I've spoken in detail about my background and upbringing, how I arrived here in Los Angeles, and what it took me to get here today. I'm the oldest of three, raised by two incredibly bright, determined, and caring parents who brought me to the United States when I was six years old. I was what you might have been, what you might call, fresh off the boat, and without guidance and determination of my mother and grandmother, I wouldn't be standing here before you today.
In fact, hold on, let's hold this time. People, could we be quiet? Shhh. Mr. Ru, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, and I wasn't special or very different from the friends I grew up with. We were equally poor, equally underserved, equally disadvantaged. What I did have was parents who expected me to go to college and do better, be better, than the generation that came before me. While I was helping my parents run the cash register at our toy store, they ingrained in me and my siblings the importance of going to college and doing better than what they had. They brought me to the United States for a better life, and it was my job to meet their expectations and work twice as hard as everyone, twice as hard to exceed everyone else. This wasn't true for the other kids growing up. Their parents were either too busy putting food on the table, or didn't think college was an opportunity available to them, or maybe they didn't even have parents at all. Today, with more than 80% of LAUSD students still from low-income families, this hasn't changed much at all. However, the share of jobs that require college education has more than doubled in the past 30 years, and children from high-income families are eight times more likely to get a college degree than from those from low-income families. Just over three decades ago, full-time workers with a high school diploma made 40% less than those with a bachelor's degree. Today, it's more than doubled. Young Americans with a high school diploma make 84% less than their college counterparts. On average, the median earning for full-time workers with a college degree are 64% higher than those without. College enrollment rates in Los Angeles are improving but are still below the national and California average, with college readiness for LAUSD students lying stagnant at around 60%. To combat and reverse these numbers, my office has been working on a college savings accounts program for the better part of 18 months that will provide dedicated savings accounts for every LAUSD student to dramatically boost high school graduation and college enrollment rates in Los Angeles. But what we have before you today is just the beginning of the lengthy discussion. We're creating the avenues and opportunities for all children to go to college. We want them to be active, engaged, and productive members of society. So in front of us today is the recommendation from the Housing and Community Investment Department to bring aboard a consultant to help develop and implement the college savings accounts program for every child in our city, to forever change their lives. And let me just close with one last statistic. If only 10% more Angelenos got a college degree, it would increase federal, state, and local tax revenue by more than $580 million annually. We pay a lot of attention to long-term impacts of housing, transit, and infrastructure. It's time for us to approach education with the same vision. I am a firm believer that education can be that silver bullet, and I strongly encourage my colleagues to cast a aye vote today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, let's move on and vote on items 33. Item 33, as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Now, I want to move on to, I believe, item 68, as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Now, I want a quick vote on reconsideration on item 49. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
So now, it's my understanding that an amendment had been circulated, so let's vote on this item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Thank you.
An amending motion for 31 has also been posted and circulated for consideration.
You blaming the fires?
Okay, so on this item, let's prepare to vote on it as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's recess the regular and go into the special.
Blumenfeld, Bannon, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Carretts, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ru, Wesson, 15 members, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, so we have speakers?
Yes, item 73 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection.
And an amending motion has been posted and circulated for consideration on item 73.
All right. Speakers? Ms. McAllister, item 73. Please come forward, Mr. Previn.
Mr. President, I'm against item 73. Huzar, he's the same one who wanted to give a clerk type as $100,000 a year, and I complained. I don't trust anything that guy did. I complained, and they took it off. Okay, I don't think we need to be putting any money here. I see at the end of the year here, you guys just tossing money all around the place.
Can we stay on the item?
I'm on 73. Authorizing $7 million to be received from the Willshire Grant, taking all of this money to Department of Housing and Affordable Housing, and taking this money, $2 million. Here, another $13,000 from AHSC. You're taking grant funds from all over the place, and you know what you're doing with it. You're doing nothing but putting all this stuff in a pot and embezzling. We know the game. I'm from Chicago. We invented the game, okay?
I know, just stay on the item.
I am on the item. We don't need you guys ramming all this money, throwing this money all around at the end of the year. You haven't done a darn thing throughout the year. You haven't built any affordable housing. My people, my black people, are still on the street. You haven't done a darn thing but pumped more drugs in their veins.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Eric Previn. Mr. Herman.
So for the record, $7 million going to waste for the Willshire Grant Fund? A Department of Housing and Community Development for affordable housing? How long have we waited for this outcry? And yet, shuffling paper of monies around like it's your loose pocket of change, you bunch of scumbag politicians with wet diapers. Skid Row Housing Trust for preliminary design and expenditures? How much better can it look? When you have Jose Weezer, Jose Weezer creating a fiasco of Broadway and allowing Skid Row African-Americans to remain homeless? That is so pathetic and skimmerish. I wish I was a prostitute so I can fuck Weezer.
All right, Mr. Previn. All right. All right, I'm gonna vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, why don't we... Mr. Weezer?
Urgent forthwith on that 73, please.
Forthwith on that item?
Urgent forthwith.
Okay, let's vote on the urgent. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, so let's now adjourn the special, return to the regular. You ready, Mr. Buscaino, items 16 and 36?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for allowing us to take these two items together. They are interrelated. So colleagues, the Port of Los Angeles has set some record-breaking months this past year, and those numbers, we attribute those success to... year, and those numbers, we attribute those success to the leadership team that's here before us from the Port of Los Angeles, the longshore men and women, those a part of the goods movement, industry, truckers, warehouse workers. Many of the gifts that you will give and receive this season will have arrived through our port before filtering through distribution centers and landing on shelves on the box of your doorstep as well. Roughly 40% of our nation's goods arrive through the San Pedro Port complex. We don't often take the time to think that your nieces and nephews hatchimals are backed by a trade industry, Jana, that involves hundreds of thousands of direct and indirect jobs. 27 terminals, 90 cranes, nearly 200,000 vehicles, just to name a few. In over the past two weeks, I organized two meetings dedicated to two very important topics related to the port, acknowledging just how, just how much goes into the trade industry and even more so that profound impacts that it has on the Southern California region and beyond. And this past week, my committee met to discuss the 2017 Cleaner Action Plan recently approved by the commissioners, the Port of Long Beach and Port of Los Angeles. And as a board member of the Air Quality Management District, and the port not only has my full support, but AQMD, just this past Friday, or last board meeting, we officially accepted $107 million from cap and trade dollars for the carom oil program that will be used for truck replacement. We're moving toward a trade industry, colleagues, that will significantly improve our air quality and reduce pollutants, but does it go far enough? And how can we do this while remaining economically competitive, while protecting the rights and jobs of our trade industry workers? These are extraordinary, important questions, and the reason why I asserted the 245 jurisdiction over the commission, in order for this body, this entire council, to hear firsthand the port's vision of becoming the cleanest and greenest port in the world, and to ensure that the current policy guidelines falls in line with our major city initiatives such as the mayor's Sustainability Plan and DWP's 2016 Power Integrated Resource Plan. Several recommendations came out of the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee meeting, further strengthening the cap plan, including regular report backs on the progress of implementing the plan to my committee. The point of all this, it's all connected. The port may feel like an island, but the person who sorts shipments in a warehouse is the one who makes your holiday gifts arrive on time. And as we all know, vehicle ship and equipment emissions do not live in a vacuum. It affects us all. And as a council, we will contribute in any way we can to ensure the best future for our communities, people who live, who work, and visit them, and every, everyone who's impacted by them. I do, again, want to recognize the port warehouse workers and port truckers who are here. Please stand and be recognized. We thank you for your commitment. We feel that we'll do everything in our power to hold those accountable, to ensure that you have fair wages and you're working in safe conditions. In addition, I do want to recognize the port leadership team is here, and if you have any questions, they can come to the table and present to you. We have Deputy Executive Directors and CFO Marla Blevins, who's here, Mike DiBernardo. We also have Council Jana Sidley, who's here, and the Director of Environmental Management, Chris Cannon. And I do want to recognize the Port Harbor Commissioner, Dave Arian, who appeared in front of the T3 Committee, and Mr. Bonn can attest to this, was very passionate about the cap, 2017 cap plan. So with that, we do want to recognize the work that's being done. I do have an amendment 36A that has been circulated, that I ask for your support moving forward. Do you want to also recognize another committee member, Mr. Krikorian, for your input and your leadership on this issue moving forward? So with that, I'd like to turn it over for any questions that colleagues may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Caress?
Well, thank you, Madam President. And I do have some concerns, and I apologize for not addressing them in committee, but we had an unusual circumstance. We were all out dealing with the fire in Bel Air.
Sir, do you have a question for the staff? I can have them come up to the table.
I, I don't have a question. I have amendments which have been introduced and have not been circulated yet.
Amendments on what item, 16 or 36?
36. And, and particularly, I'm concerned about 36A, and whether this is actually a report on how we can potentially weaken the port's Clean Air Action Plan. And the, the key wording is that it addresses near-zero emission truck standards and helps, and seeks to help incentivize the first several hundred early adopter of near-zero trucks. Near-zero is kind of a code word for natural gas. We've all seen the impacts of natural gas when it leaks. We know that LNG trucks emit dangerous quantities of particulates and ultrafine particulates, which are small enough that they get deeper into your lungs and into your bloodstream where they can help cause cancer and heart disease. In 19, in 2015, the Environmental Protection Agency in California released a study which demonstrated a strong association between long-term exposure to ultrafine particles and air pollution and death from heart disease. So, we are concerned that if we allow for the purchase of near-zero emission trucks and adopt those standards in 2018 or 2019, we will have a bunch of natural gas fueling stations being built, while we expect the price reductions of zero emission vehicles and their rollout in the near-distant future, and that we'll wind up with a bunch of stranded assets also of natural gas-related vehicles and their infrastructure. We've certainly seen all the different kinds of electric vehicles that are being manufactured in Lancaster, and we know that affordable zero emission trucks are available in the future. And so, I have a motion which I don't know if it's circulated yet, but it will.
It is circulated.
Oh, good, okay. It has circulated, and the main things it calls for is under items F, G, and H, enforceable milestones for the adoption of zero emission freight movement, including yard equipment and drayage trucks. What the port is going to do to ensure that there's enough power at the port for a zero emission future, and what the port can do to ensure that any financial incentives offered as a result of the CAA P favor zero emission vehicles. And so, these are requests for report backs on all three of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Caress. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Caress's concerns. Let me be clear, as, as a child of the Port of Los Angeles, I've seen amazing improvements the ports of Los Angeles has done over the course of my lifetime. I've also seen the dark days, literally, growing up in San Pedro. In fact, we know that the port in the last 10 years have significantly reduced emissions on their own by nearly 90% of NOCs and SOCs, and we can always, we've been saying we can do more. The debate here, colleagues, is not whether to go through a near-zero or zero emission. We need to march forward toward a zero emissions port. What's before us is a plan that, that the port clearly indicates that it's, can take in zero emission or near-zero emission technology. I'd like to invite Mr. Cannon to the table. We know today that we need to use the best available technology to lower our emissions today. And I think about the residents in the port communities. What can we use today that doesn't limit ourselves, we're using the best available technology, including near-zero trucks? So if you can address that, and part of the plan, again, is not specifically focusing on one technology, correct?
Good morning, sir. Please introduce yourself.
And just for the record, an all-electric fleet is not available today at this moment, correct?
No, my name is Chris Cannon. I'm the Director of Environmental Management at the Port of Los Angeles, and no, electric vehicles are still in the development stage right now. They're prototypes. We're testing them. In fact, over the next year to two years, we hope to put as many as, well, they're already in, in plans for about 55 or 60 of them, and we have a plan to do another 100 that's been, as part of our, our program. But in the near term, we don't expect there will be large numbers of those available simply because of the limitations on the technology. As has been referred to by the council member Caress, there is a near-zero emission technology that does exist, and we have been already having discussions with your colleagues at the AQMD and others to begin identifying monies that could be available for a early adopter program, to begin to fund those kinds of trucks and get them out on the road as soon as possible.
Yeah, so I can't, as, you know, as a representative of the Wilmington-San Pedro communities, I can't go back to my community and say, "Sorry, guys, you're gonna have to wait another four years so this, this technology exists." And then in the meantime, let's continue to choke on diesel emission trucks.
That's right, and we're, we're gonna do our best to put those with AQMD and the Air Resources Board and other partners in the region, their support, to develop those kinds of programs for early adopters and get them moving as soon as possible.
And the plan clearly indicates, Chris, if you can just, obviously, if there is a zero emission truck that's available, that works, that functions, the plan will accept that type of technology, correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, the early adopter programs will not just target near-zero, they'll target clean vehicles. And so, near-zero is the ones that are the most plentiful and available, but if people are able to identify zero emission vehicles and want to purchase those, we will do everything we can to encourage the introduction of those.
Mr. Bonn reminds me, our DOT fleet today is near-zero, use S and G, C and G, but I know we're, they're, even our own fleet are moving our way towards electrification as well.
Yes.
And I, I was told in committee that Q1, maybe Q2 of 2018, we'll start seeing those near-zero emissions trucks come online. Is that correct?
Yes, we're told that the trucks will be delivered and be, begin to, orders can be picked up sometime in Q2 of 2018.
And that's the purpose of 36A today, colleagues. I encourage you to support 36A amendment before you, and Madam President, I'll ask that 36B be sent back to T3.
Councilmember, may I just add that?
Please do.
That the vehicles need to be certified by the Air Resources Board, Resources Board at the 0.02 level. We expect that'll happen, but that needs to be a first step before.
Sure, and Mr. DiBernardo, would you like to contribute? You're good? Okay.
Mr. Caress, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So, what happens if we create this gas infrastructure? How deeply are we embedding this fiscally, and how much will we have a problem with stranded assets in, in trucks and infrastructure? And how can we avoid that?
Well, there's, there's two, two parts to your question. One is the, the vehicles themselves, and the other is the infrastructure. We believe that the way the program is designed, there is opportunity for one generation of near-zero vehicles to be used and operated before the next generation of zero emission vehicles can be operated and purchased in time for the 2035 target of having all equipment operating, drayage equipment operating at the port to be 2035. So we think that there is time for a generation of near-zero. This is something that we've talked about with the agencies, particularly AQMD. They believe that is also possible because that will help meet near-term goals for attainment while also not putting off the opportunity to do the long-term goals. As far as the infrastructure piece is concerned, there already is a fairly sizable infrastructure in place for natural gas. We have the largest natural gas filling station, if you will, that exists in this area and this part of the United States, actually exists in the port right now, and there are, is a fairly wide, substantial infrastructure for natural gas that exists in this region. We think that's enough to support these near-zero vehicles as the other, the zero emission technologies are still being developed.
Have you looked at the, the questions about the health impacts of the part that isn't the zero, the near-zero, and the particulates that, that come from this process? Do you have any concerns, or have you closely researched that?
Well, councilmember, you identified a very important issue in, in ultrafine particles. That is something that has been identified as a concern for natural gas vehicles. It's something that we continue to study. We think that the, the problem is not to the point where we believe that that technology is not appropriate or applicable for use in the area, but we continue to study it closely. That's something that the Air Resources Board and also the AQMD are studying. It's a concern, but not to the point where we think that it's a problem.
And how long do these trucks last?
It's hard to say. Drayage trucks typically operate at least seven years, some of them as many as 15, and there is recent legislation that you saw that indicated that they would operate as, as much as 800,000 miles or more. So, it varies depending upon the duty cycle and how they're operated. For drayage, somewhere in the 5,000 to 800,000 miles is, is about right.
And if we were able to obtain actual zero emission vehicles in the next two, three, four years, would we keep these because we had too much money invested in them to do otherwise?
Now, we think that the opportunity to operate that equipment, and by the way, the, the mileage numbers I gave you are, are what we know for diesel. The mileage numbers for natural gas are still sort of developing because that technology is still emerging. I mean, it's used, but not in the drayage, drayage duty cycle. But your question is, would we still keep them? Yes, we would. We think that that equipment has an opportunity to, to operate throughout the 2020s, and that by the end of the 2020s, it would be able to begin to be replaced in the early 2030s in order for us to meet our goals of being zero emission by 2035. So we think that's a good 10 or more years that gives them an opportunity to operate that equipment and get its useful life out of it.
Do you see?
Mr. Caress, I'm gonna call you, you're over, you're over your time.
Okay, one, one last question.
Okay.
Do you see any concerns with having 36B passed and actually getting reports back and more careful consideration for these items?
We're happy to report to you and, and on any matters that you would like us to report to you on, and we're happy to do it.
So I, I would ask the council to approve both 36A and 36B. There are only reports back, and it would provide us the greater amount of information on an issue that certainly has two sides to it.
Mr. Buscaino?
Again, colleagues, the, the whole reason for exerting the 245 authority is to have this robust discussion and reminds us that this cap before us are guidelines moving forward towards a zero emissions port, but also reminds us that this cap before us is Cleaner Action Plan, not only impacts port communities, but this entire region as a whole. And as a chairman of, of the, this committee, the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee, I respectfully request that we continue this dialogue, approve 36A before you, and respectfully ask 36B to be sent back to committee.
Mr. Krikorian?
I can pass.
You're, you're gonna pass? Any other questions, members? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take two votes, item number 16. Can we open the roll?
This is item 36, Madam President.
16. We did 16 and 36 together. We're gonna vote on 16 first because 36 has two amendments, okay?
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and open the roll on 16. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 36. We're gonna go ahead and take two votes on item 36 for 36, 36A as amended by Mr. Buscaino, and whether we send 36B to committee or not, okay? So let's go ahead and vote on 36 as amended, 36A. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
There's also a request by Mr. Buscaino to send 36B to his committee. So let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
Thank you very much. Those two items pass. Madam, let's go ahead and vote on item number 10. Mr. Englander?
Um, yes, can I ask item 35 and 30, 30, I'm sorry, 35 and 44, forthwith, please?
35 and 44?
Yes, ma'am.
Forthwith for Mr. Englander. Let's go ahead and open the roll on item 10. Let's go ahead and open the roll on item ten. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Let's move on to item thirty-four.
And, uh, Madam President and members, item thirty-four is a, going to be a fair hearing item. I would request that the members be in their seats and either being, paying attention to the speakers at the podium or at the monitors at the front of your desk. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Harris Dawson for opening remarks. Go ahead.
You, Madam Chair. Uh, in two thousand nine, the Liquor Bank located at thirty-six hundred West Stalker Street was referred to the Department of City Planning Nuisance Abatement Revocation Unit by the Citywide Nuisance Abatement Program stemming from a number of complaints ranging from drinking in public, sale of alcoholic beverages to minors, attempted robbery, uh, batter, battery, onsite narcotics sales and, and use, gang activities, counterfeit goods sales and blighted property conditions. The chief zoning administrator proposed corrective conditions on the business to mitigate the adverse effects on the community. The, uh, ZA issued twenty-eight conditions on the site. At present, uh, we know of at least twenty-two of those conditions that, uh, they are in violation of. Uh, at the meeting on March ninth, two thousand ten, um, the, this, uh, uh, the committee, denied two appeals against these restrictions and the, uh, council brought them back on March nineteenth of two thousand ten. And so today, we're, uh, have a hearing where hopefully we can resolve this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Is the appellant here? Mr. Gonzalez? Michael Gonzalez, the appellant? Good, good morning. You have five minutes, sir.
Good morning, Madam President, councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Brust. I work with Mr.-
You're not Michael Gonzalez?
No, I'm not. I work with-
Are you speaking on behalf of him or?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm, I'm an associate in his office.
Oh, very well.
We represent WB&amp;M, the owner of Liquor Bank.
Hold this time for just a second. Put it back, five minutes. Just wanted to get clarity on that. All right, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I want to remind the council of the reason why we're here today and what this matter is on our calendar. This is a limited appeal on hours of operation and a plan approval. And this, uh, action, uh, was an, was an appeal on the owner's behalf, uh, simply on these two items. This was a partial appeal, not a full appeal, and has been expanded to act as a referendum on the entire CUP for alcohol sales. And this matter has essentially threatened to swallow the entire appeal and the livelihood of the owners here. This was specifically designated as a partial appeal and not a full appeal. And if the grounds, the limited grounds of the partial appeal can then be expanded to become an attack on the entire underlying CUP, which is the subject, uh, still of a valid approval, then the appeal rights of the owner become essentially worthless if they're putting the benefits of an existing approval at risk simply to appeal two minor items. Again, those are the hours of operation and the plan approval. The, the other point that we'd like to make is that there's not sufficient record, there's, excuse me, sufficient evidence in the record before the CA to, uh, to, excuse me, justify a revocation of the entire CUP for the property. There have been some incidents in the past and, uh, those have been addressed or being addressed. But as far as the record from the ZA process that's now before the council, there simply isn't enough evidence to justify this action, especially in view of the fact that the, that the items that are the specific subject of the appeal are, again, the hours of approval or the hours of operation and the plan approval. And this, the intent was not to open the door to a full attack on the underlying CUP, but that's what it has become. And in, in terms of equity and maintaining the effectiveness of the right to appeal, we would request that the council reject revocation of the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go ahead and call LAPD to the table. Are they here? Is anyone here from the police department? You can go ahead and take a seat at the table, sir. Please introduce yourself. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Officer Paul Evlith, assigned to the LAPD Southwest Area. I'm the senior lead officer. I have been assigned to that position since February of two thousand seventeen for the Limerick Park community as well as Angeles Mesa communities. Included in those responsibilities would be thirty-six hundred Stalker, which is the address for Liquor Bank and the surrounding areas, including the intersection of Crenshaw and Stalker. Since February two thousand seventeen, I have personally observed numerous situations of drinking in public, individuals passed out on the sidewalk, blocking business doors, blocking resident, uh, doors adjacent to Liquor Bank, numerous cases of illegal vending, and I've received numerous complaints from the community about those concerns. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't.
No? The other speakers? Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'm Officer, I'm Officer Levinson. I work, uh, the LAPD. I work Detective Support Vice Division. I've been assigned to Detective Support Vice Division for approximately ten years. Uh, I've been assigned to the Liquor Bank where I worked nuisance abatement. Uh, this location, uh, came to my attention in two thousand eight. See the numerous complaints regarding the gang activity, uh, the illegal vending, the drinking in public, uh, also done some undercover operations at this location for, uh, sales of minors and also for our detox. As of this year, uh, the cost of service, I have noticed they have increased. Uh, and this is after we, uh, uh, also gave suggested improvements and also gave, uh, condition of use permits. At that same time, uh, since we initiated and gave those conditions, they still haven't complied to, uh, certain things like for the illegal vending and also the cost of service. Also, ADW stabbing occurred at the location. Uh, so what I'm just gonna suggest that notice since we gave them those conditions and also the CUP, that the crimes are still occurring and they're still high and they're not a hundred percent in compliance with the, with LAPD.
Good morning. My name is Detective Dana Harris and I'm the officer in charge of the Detective Support and Vice Division Nuisance Abatement Section. I've had the pleasure of working for the City of Los Angeles for the past thirty years. I've also had the pleasure of being a supervisor at Southwest Area, either working in a narcotics capacity as an officer in charge, a vice supervisor and as an assistant watch commander there at Southwest Area. In that tenure and working at Southwest Area, one of the constants that has been coming through is Liquor Bank. Whether there are crimes of violence as we see here or we see the nuisance-related crimes. In the past couple of years, as I've been the officer in charge at Southwest Area as or the nuisance-related activities, what I have noticed is this. I've had the pleasure of supervising these fine officers who have made repeated attempts with the property owners and the business owners to help correct the problem. They've met with them, offered suggested improvements, offered to help them to mitigate the problems and nuisance problems. And each time they're met with, of course, yes, we, officers, we are going to work on these problems and then we have negative results. One of the times when I was set to meet the officers, uh, to meet with the property owners, in a span of maybe fifteen minutes, I observed the illegal sales, the street sales, the indecent exposure, the urinating in public, the parking in handicapped spots. And as I, and if that's not troubling, when I look at the crime reports, just since we've had that meeting with the property ownership, we have the, again, indecent exposure calls, narcotic-related arrests, assault with a deadly weapon and the brandishing of a weapon. And what I, what I would like to say is, more than anything, when we speak of the violence, the officers and myself have met with property owners and tried to correct the problem. We've tried to mitigate the problem. We've tried to bring about, be a, be a positive member of the community. And each time as, again, we are met with, yes, we will try, we will try, and then we are back here again and again and again to try to mitigate that problem. So I'm very much in favor of the revocation of the use at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna go ahead and call speakers now. Thank you. First speaker is Jeremy Brust, Matt Johansson and Thomas Thun. Are you here? Jeremy Brust? Matt Johansson? Is Matt Johansson here? Can you please line up so you can speak?
So I believe this is the-
And Thomas Thun? Hold on for just a second.
So I believe this is the person who spoke as the appellant or the, the perimenter-
I spoke in Mr. Gonzalez's position, so I'll defer.
Matt Johansson?
I was called up earlier and I said what I needed to say then, and it's on the record.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Thomas Thun, followed by John Gonzalez and Carl Morgan? Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Ms. President. Um, I am just, I just wanna make it clear that there is, uh, a clear understanding between the business operator and the property owner. I am the property owner. I do not operate the Liquor Bank. I used to operate the Liquor Bank myself as an owner of the property. Uh, when I operate the Liquor Bank from, from two thousand six all the way until two thousand eight, when I sold the business, we do not have any of these issues that's ongoing. Um, please be clear that when I operate the business, I was, uh, providing employment to community members as well as, uh, the tax revenue to the city. Um, I understand that the city wants to revoke the license, uh, the CUP to the operator. I, I am here to ask the members, councilmember, to reconsider, uh, to not revoke the license. I believe that the business is in escrow for sale and I believe that we can get a new-
Thank you very much, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is John Gonzalez, followed by Carl Morgan and Keith Renty.
Hi there, my name is John Gonzalez. I'm a resident of the adjacent neighborhood to the Liquor Bank. I'm not gonna, I, I'll just confirm what the LAPD officers have said, that all of this criminal activity occurs at this location. It's, it's not becoming less, it's not being hindered by their security guard. The provisions that they've promised to make for us in the neighborhood to control the situation have not been followed through. We've been listening to them for up to nine years now with promises of how it's gonna change and it is not changing. So at what point does the community, uh, deserve to have the criminal activity and nuisances that affect our ability to patronize our commercial areas and, and utilize the investments in transportation that the city is, uh, doing, protected by the city? Uh, there's, there's a restaurant that opened next to this establishment that we all look forward to and the spillover criminal activity from this place is a large factor in why that restaurant was short-lived and is closed down. So I encourage you, please, for the neighborhood to, to-
Thank you.
Move forward to the revocation.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carl Morgan.
Uh, Carl Morgan.
Followed by Keith Renty and Ernest Johnson.
Uh, Carl Morgan, uh, Chair of the Empowerment Congress West Neighborhood Council. Uh, despite the apparent use of security personnel, years of complaints requested by the community, uh, members of the Neighborhood Council and city officials, uh, this store fails to operate in such a manner to prevent unlawful activities and nuisance behavior. Uh, there's a great deal of loitering throughout the day and the evening hours and operations as the officers testified, uh, trash and alcohol containers litter the sidewalks, continuous illegal vending, harassment of passersby, disturbances of the peace, illicit activity, including consumption of alcohol, sale and the use of marijuana and disruptive behavior that literally spills out into oncoming traffic as well as the adjacent residential areas. Uh, the owners of the store and its proximity to the LAPD Traffic Division have little, little, if any, impact in deterring this activity. The continued operation of the Liquor Bank jeopardize and endangers the, the public health and safety of persons residing or working on the premises and in the surrounding area and is a threat to the community and quality of life. Uh, we therefore ask to revoke the store's conditional use permit.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Keith Renty, followed by Ernest Johnson and Michael Simmons.
Hello, my name is Keith Renty. I'm president of Baldwin Hills Homeowners Association. I'm here as a private citizen, however, I do represent many of the residents of that community. Uh, you've heard, um, instances from two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen of the various violations. We, as a community, have not felt safe going down to the Liquor Bank for many, many years. When it opened, it was a very good establishment within the community, providing, um, high-end wines, but that is not the case today. It's someplace that I don't frequent, the community doesn't frequent, and with all the violations and the opportunity to correct the, uh, occurrences there, we support the revocation of the license. Thank you.
Ernest Johnson, followed by Michael Simmons and Sheri Patton.
Good morning, Council President and Council Members. My name is Ernest Johnson. I grew up in the Crenshaw District. I was born and raised there. I actually tutor young men who are transferring from high school to college or from middle school to high school. And one of the young men I mentor is named Jackson. And he travels to the Liquor Bank on his way back home and to school as well. And when I was a child, I felt safe enough to go in there and get a Gatorade when I was headed to practice, when my mother wanted to go there to get groceries. However, that is not the case today. Uh, Jackson is a wonderful young man who is intelligent and is a great football player. I don't feel like it is his responsibility to worry about the safety or security about his neighborhood businesses. I feel like that is a responsibility upon you all. And that's why I feel like you should revoke it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Simmons, followed by Sheri Patton and Khalid Alim.
Good morning, Council President and Council Member. My name is Mike Simons and I represent Thomas Thun, the owner of the property. Uh, Mr. Thun had no notice of the appeal that gave rise to this recommendation of revocation. He didn't authorize it or approve it. The tenant is currently involved in a bankruptcy proceeding and we've sought permission from the bankruptcy court to evict the tenant, the operator of the Liquor Bank, from the property. We believe that the court is going to grant us that relief and once we regain possession of the premises, Mr. Thun urgently wants to work with the city to improve conditions at the property. As a result, because Mr. Thun hasn't had notice of or the opportunity to respond to this appeal and because he didn't authorize the underlying appeal, we would ask that the city not revoke the conditional use permit at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sheri Patton, followed by Khalid Alim and Troy Ragland.
Good morning, I'm Sheri Patton and I'm a resident of Limerick Park. I live four blocks away from the Liquor Bank. Uh, everything you have heard here, I have witnessed myself, selling to minors, prostitution, et cetera. Uh, I urge you to please revoke their liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council. My name is Khalid Al Alim. I'm the president of Park Mesa Heights Community Council and enough is enough. Uh, we've been seeing these types of nuisances going on for a number of years right now. The Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Mall is transforming. We have a wonderful Crenshaw LAX rail station there and it's, uh, right next to our parade route of one of the most legendary civil rights icons in black history. So enough is enough. Uh, we believe that it should be revoked. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Ragland, followed by Sheri Sanders Gordon.
Uh, good morning, my name is Troy Ragland. Uh, I am a member of the Consolidated Board of Realtors of Los Angeles, the oldest African-American trade organization here in the city. Uh, we still meet, uh, around the corner from where, um, this particular establishment is located. Um, and I still go to the barber shop, which is down the block, for the last twenty years. And trust me, I had to stop going to the barber shop, literally in the afternoon or in the evenings, to the crack of dawn early in the morning so I can avoid all the activity and all the goings-on in the area. Um, I don't walk through there anymore. I've literally had to stop. And, uh, it, the, the environment there is definitely not healthy and I am for the revocation of their license. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Sheri Sanders Gordon. Next speaker is Sherri Sanders-Gordon.
My name is Sherri Sanders-Gordon. I'm a deputy city attorney and the neighborhood school safety prosecutor. I come today because I have received several complaints from parents about the safety issues surrounding the liquor bank. This has happened, not just as I am the current neighborhood school safety prosecutor, but also as a neighborhood prosecutor for Southwest Police Division. Over and over again, parents have come to me asking, when are the complaints and the issues surrounding the liquor bank going to be addressed? And we have told them to come and to these hearings, and they've gone through the process, but every time we get to a certain point, it's stopped. Again, just yesterday, another parent asked me, when are the issues surrounding the liquor bank going to be addressed? And I expressed what the ongoing complaints that we have made and the progress that we have tried to have. So I'm asking on behalf of the parents who have constantly come to the city attorney's office, asking that we revoke the CUP.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris Dawson to close.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to ask the zoning administrator to come to the desk.
Absolutely. Is the zoning administrator here? Do you want to please come up to the table?
Thank you so much. After you state your name and position, my first question is, what have you heard today that is in violation of the original conditions that have been mandated since July of 2009?
Alita James, associate zoning administrator for the planning department. And yes, what I've heard here today has been many violations ongoing of the original 2009 imposition of conditions or conditions, operating conditions that were placed on the operation. I've heard some new evidence here presented today, and also, again, a lot of the original evidence, drinking in public, the blocking of the sidewalks, some gang activity, and all of the LAPD illegal activities that are occurring in addition to the violations. Some of the violations deal with the loitering and lack of security, and selling to minors and harassing of passerbuyers, and those are all originals, conditions that were placed on the liquor bank. Given the, I think, the gravity of the testimony that was presented here today and by the Los Angeles Police Department, also members of the public or the community, and given the 28 corrective conditions which have been imposed on the operation for the past eight years, and the operators' failure to achieve this full compliance with the conditions, again, ranging from failure to provide a 24-hour dedicated hotline, posting of required signage on the site, limiting the patrons to a 10-minute parking, or, again, no loitering or drinking in the parking lot, and signage that should be also, was required to be in Spanish as well as English, and consistently locking or securing the back gate off of the alley. Those are some of the violations that I hear that are still occurring. The zoning administrator's letter determination, which was issued in August of 2017, focused on the operation to obtaining the full compliance. And that was why a 90-day plan approval was necessary, and also reducing the hours of operation from a 10 o'clock PM closing to an 8:00 PM closing. However, it's evident, after hearing the testimony here today, it's evident that no additional compliance reviews, addition, or modification of existing conditions would yield a result of full compliance. As the business operator has now been subject to three public hearings, of which two were for condition compliance of corrective conditions, the operator has never shown full compliance. Therefore, it's clear that the prior governmental efforts to cause the owner to operate or eliminate the problems associated with the land use have failed. Also, the owner-operator has failed to demonstrate the willingness and/or the ability to eliminate the problems associated with the land use, thereby jeopardizing the health and safety of those who reside and work in the community. So given the history of the operation and the failure of the operator to achieve full compliance with the established corrective conditions, documented evidence received prior to the zoning administrator's decision of this new and ongoing criminal acts, calls for service at the location continued, and the 28 corrective conditions, the zoning administrator's action today would be to revoke the sale of the alcoholic beverages at the existing business known as the liquor bank.
Thank you so much. That concludes my questions. I appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Members, this has been going on for at least 10 years that we can document, probably longer. You've heard the testimony of our officers, who, every minute an officer spends at the liquor bank, they're not somewhere else. And this is a place where we know, a person got up here and said, "I'm assigned to the liquor bank," as if this business is entitled to its own police officer. And so the drain on city resources, the torment that the community has gone through, the flagrant disrespect over a 10-year period that we've been able to document, we ask all of you to join me in taking a vote to revoke the right to sell liquor at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. That item has now be formed. Madam Clerk, can you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Okay, that item passes. Let's go ahead, and Mr. Kukorin, you have a special introduction this morning.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Yes, I'm very proud to be able to introduce to you a group of middle-school students from the Oakwood School in North Hollywood. The Oakwood School is one of the finest educational assets that we have in the city of Los Angeles, and I'm very proud to have them in my district in North Hollywood. And this group of middle-school students, along with their teacher, Matt Fagan, are participating in an immersion program called Explore LA, where for the next several weeks, they're intensively studying everything about the evolution of our city, its history, the way it operates, and they're here to see how we do things here in City Hall. So I hope you'll join me in welcoming them to our chambers. Stand up, you guys. Stand up and be on TV.
Stand up and take a bow and see yourself on the monitor.
Thank you, Madam President.
You can wave to your friends. No waving? Okay. Thank you very much, and welcome to City Hall. Mr. City Attorney, let's go ahead and take up items 70, 71, and 72, which are scheduled for closed session.
So 71 and 72, we will go into closed. I believe for item 70, we can take it in open, and for the record, it's a recommended denial of the settlement offer.
Let's go ahead and just vote on item number 70. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
15 ayes.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and go into closed sessions for items 71 and 72. Sergeants, can you please help us clear the room?
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, KF5060, watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well. We begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Curly Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the We tip hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. We tip hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, can you have 5060 watch three?
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Curly Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Curly Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
I'd like to call items thirty-one, thirty-three, and thirty-four forthwith.
Yes, I had you down for thirty-four forthwith. What are the other two?
Thirty-one and thirty-three.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, go ahead and report on items seventy-one and seventy-two that were heard in closed session.
Thank you, Madam President. There was no action and there's nothing reportable out of closed session on those items.
All right, thank you for that. Let's go ahead and take up item twenty-six. There are any questions for item twenty-six? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll on Mr. Englander. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, that item passes. That concludes all the items. Oh, Mr. Englander.
Yeah, on that item on twenty-six. Can we go ahead and take a second vote for an urgent forthwith on that, please?
Okay, urgent forthwith at the request of Mr. Englander. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. That concludes our items on, Mr. Rue.
Forty-eight forthwith, please.
Item forty?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight forthwith for Mr. Rue. Any other items forthwith, members? Seeing, Madam Cook, what's before us? What's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posted and referred. That clears the desk. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Wesson.
Madam President, in fact, I was, I acted too quickly. It's an adjourning motion.
Okay, are there any announcement, members? Mr. Harris-Dawson, you look like you want to make an announcement.
Adjourning motion.
Okay. Let's go ahead and rise for adjourning motions. Public, can we please rise for adjourning motions? And we can start with Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I was in a meeting, a brief, brief meeting behind chambers and for maybe two minutes, and I, I began to re-enter this chambers, and I look into the face of Mr. Bonin and Mr. Buscayino, and they informed me that our colleague, Mayor Ed Lee from San Francisco, tragically passed away. That he was, I guess, had a series of events that he had attended, and his day was done and went to a local Safeway, and by one-ten, one-eleven this morning, he was pronounced dead. He was the first Asian-American mayor of the city-county of San Francisco, a native of Seattle, if I remember correctly, the son of Chinese immigrants. We should make sure that his wife, Anita, and his two daughters know that our hearts and our prayers from the city of Los Angeles are with them. I don't know if he ever thought that he was going to be an elected official. I don't know if that was his dream. He was a lawyer, civil rights lawyer for decades, and also committed to the city that he loved. In fact, the owner of the San Francisco Giants declared him the number-one Giants baseball fan in the city of San Francisco. But he worked for the city, and I guess everyone there just respected him. And when Gavin Newsom, who was our lieutenant governor, was mayor and ran for office, they, as a council supervisor, county, city, they decided to appoint him as their mayor. He had, he was their CAO or their administrator at the time. And I guess the best way to wrap this up is just to try to ask everyone to focus on the fact that the only thing, and I've said this before in this chambers, that the only thing that you can count on is one breath. That's it. And so for all of us, we need to figure out a way to be above petty differences. And if there are somebody in your family, you're having a difference of opinion, and you say, like I used to say in my younger days, "I'm gonna wait three days and then I'll apologize." I think you should apologize today. And if there's somebody that you really care about and that you love, I think you should tell them that you love them today. This guy was moving and doing things that he was described as being in with great energy and great spirits just minutes before the Lord claimed it. So I am proud that, that we serve in a state where we have people like Mayor Lee, that were progressive and that were leaders, individuals that believe that we have so much more in common than the things that separate us. So it is not good news, but I do think that San Francisco's a better place, Los Angeles is a better place, and every city looked to somebody like Ed Lee, their better place just because of his existence. So with that said, Madam President, I ask that we rise and stand straight and stiff and adjourn in the memory of a good man.
Thank you. May he rest in peace. We should all add our names to that adjourning motion. Mr. Corretts. Oh, you, hold for just a second, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Rue, did you want to add to the adjourning motion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. President, for doing that. You know, Mayor Ed Lee was a trailblazer in the, in my community, the Asian-American community, and I have a little bit of background facts if I can so add. You know, Mayor Ed Lee, he was a child of Chinese immigrants and raised by hard-working parents who knew from an early age, and he knew from an early age just how hard it was for an immigrant family of a low-income earner to make it in America. He was a managing attorney for the San Francisco Asian Law Caucus. He fought for affordable housing and the rights of renters and immigrants. He saw it to that no poor immigrant families would be taken advantage of. He became a leader in the community and fought for families like his and like mine. He soon was the leading San Francisco, he was leading San Francisco's Human Rights Commission and ran for the city's first, and ran the city's first enterprise program for women and minority-owned businesses. As Council President stated, being mayor was not a position he sought, but once he held it, his thoughtful, compassionate, and progressive leadership made San Francisco a better place to live. He raised the minimum wage. He built landmark housing trust funds that invested 1.5 billion dollars in affordable housing projects. He fought for the homeless and for immigrant communities. He was a leader for the entire city and worked hard to bring prosperity to his city that would serve everyone. And as San Francisco's first Asian-American mayor, he was a source of pride for me and for many, many others, not just for the Asian-American community, but for anyone inspired by his thoughtful and compassionate leadership. He is survived by his wife and his two daughters, as well as a legacy of leadership that shines as an example for all of us in public service. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Corretts?
I just had an announcement that you didn't spot me on, so if everyone else has done with adjournments, I'd do it afterwards.
I did call for announcements, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and going along with the theme that the Council President brought up about the only thing you can count on is the breath that you're breathing, now I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Minister Arturo Frazier. Arturo was born and raised in the city of Compton, went to high school there, went to the deep south to college, graduated from Southern University in two thousand and two. After earning his undergraduate degree, he came back to Southern California and held several posts, including being a field deputy for the congress member, a executive at the Los Angeles Urban League, but best known and known to me and I think some of you around the horseshoe as a field deputy for State Senator Isidore Hall. Arturo was also a well-known community organizer and minister in his community in Compton. On Sunday night, leaving a church service, he stepped off the curb and was hit by a hit-and-run driver, and we lost him at the very, very young age of thirty-nine years old. And so the former Senator Isidore Hall and others are putting up a fund to help the family. This is a death that they're completely unprepared for and is shocking to the entire community, certainly somebody whose name we expected to see somewhere on a ballot somewhere in the future. So it's a great loss to Compton and to the city of Los Angeles.
If I can just add my name to that adjourning motion as well? Mr. Price as well? Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two adjourning motions. I'm going to start with Rusty Millar of Silverlake, a bit of an icon in Silverlake. Rusty Wilson F. Millar III was his full name. Rusty was born in Detroit, Michigan on August fifth, nineteen fifty-one. He was raised in Portage, Michigan, and was a graduate of Central Michigan University. In the late nineteen seventies, he moved to Woodland, California, where he became a city councilman, the start of his lifelong love of all things political. In nineteen ninety-two, he relocated to Los Angeles and quickly got involved both politically and socially in Silverlake. Rusty was involved with the Silverlake Neighborhood Council for many years. He worked to make the community safer in relation to traffic, identifying where pedestrian-activated signals needed to be, stop signs needed to be located. He assisted with the Emergency Awareness CERT classes very diligently over the years, called in bulky items weekly for years, and worked closely with Los Angeles Police Department to reduce crime in the area. He worked to get the Sunset Junction streetscape, which was completed last year, worked to get the Michelle Tarrina Street Safe Routes to Schools grant completed early this year. Department of Transportation is currently working to install the pedestrian-activated light at Silverlake Boulevard and Van Pelt Place next to the Recreation Center and walking path, a very important safety measure for the community that Rusty always championed. Our lives intersected in the summer of two thousand and two when I was a new deputy for Eric Garcetti, and all of the things I mentioned, I've literally worked with him to help make happen, and he was the, lived the spirit of a committee of one gets things done, a real driver to improve his immediate and larger surroundings in Silverlake. As an avid runner, Rusty joined the Los Angeles Chapter of Front Runners and volunteered to host weekly runs in Silverlake and Griffith Park for two decades. He ran most every five K and ten K in the Los Angeles area and frequently won his age division. He also ran half marathons along the Great Wall of China and in Antarctica. Didn't even know they had runs in Antarctica, but they do. He retired in October of this year and relocated to New Mexico, where he dreamed of becoming a gentleman farmer and having an orchard of fruit and nut trees, a dream sadly left unfulfilled. He passed away very suddenly just last month in Albuquerque, New Mexico. He survived by many dear running friends, political friends, and some foes, and his two Chesapeake Bay Retrievers, Diesel and Chaco. Rusty was not an uncomplicated individual, but his legacy will live on in Silverlake and in all of our hearts as well. The second adjourning motion I have is for Jose Ortega Valencia. Some of the family members in attendance for Mr. Valencia include Aaron Ortega, Joel Castellone, David Castellone, Jose Ortega Junior, Ana Ortega, and our own city's Director of Human Relations Commission, his son Francisco Ortega. Colleagues, this afternoon, we celebrate the life of Mr. Valencia, an extraordinary human being and a loving, caring father. Don Jose Ortega Valencia, born in the small rural ranch of Plania Jalisco, Mexico in nineteen thirty-three to his father Santiago Ortega and mother Cesaria Ortega Valencia. From his humble beginnings in the rugged mountains of Jalisco, where he learned the value of family, hard work, humility, tradition, and respect for all people, to the present day where his integrity, solidarity with others, warmth, and solid character defined him until the last year of his life. He was a strong pillar of the family, a man driven by his desire to ensure that family was intact and well taken care of, even in the most difficult times. Soon after arriving in Los Angeles in nineteen seventy-four, he had gained employment at the famous Philippe's French Dip, where he would be a dedicated employee for the next twenty years. He was a true example of simplicity while transcending the difficulty of raising eleven children. He was an immigrant warrior who took- He was an immigrant warrior who took chances crossing the turbulent borders to provide for his most valuable asset, his children. His Rancho stories, his unconditional love, his persistent spirit, and his love of life will remain in his family's hearts and in every heart who ever knew him, and memories until the end of time. Mr. Valencia is survived by wife Maria Beda Ortega Patino, whom he was married to for 65 years, his 11 children, in addition to Francisco, whom I mentioned, Catalina Bernabi, Felix Florencio, Santiago Rosa Lourdes, Jose Ana, and Jose Antonio. He is also survived by his siblings Berta, Jesús, and Modesto. May Jose Ortega Valencia rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Wesson?
I'd like to be a signer on that adjourning motion.
On the second adjourning motion?
Along with Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Any other adjourning motions, members? Seeing none, Mr. Corretts, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to ask if I could introduce Rabbi Baruch Kunin from Chabad for a brief message.
Madam President and all you wonderful people, city councilmen, I have been coming here since 1969, where our menorah, the Kaddis menorah, which is in our headquarters at Chabad, stands always in that ritz tunda. And I wanted to say, I've been here in Los Angeles since 1965. You people are great. Our city is great, and I'd like to invite all of you to come, join us and Mayor Garcetti as we kindle the menorah and all the singing and the dancing of the kids. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and happy Hanukkah to all of you. It begins tonight and goes for eight days. And may the lights of Hanukkah go on forever and ever, and may the city of Los Angeles stand strong forever and ever, and all of us together. God bless you all.
Thank you, and happy Hanukkah, and thank you for that beautiful message that adjourned in our meeting. Thank you very much.